... present and absent.
Kane.
Here.
McDermott.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Slater.
Here.
Hanson.
Open meeting and wanted statement?
I, the under sign clerk for the Board of Education of the Ava Independent School District, number one of Woods County, Oklahoma, certified at prior to December 15 in the last calendar year, the date time and place of this regular meeting was filed in the office of the county clerk of Woods County, Oklahoma. I also certified at least 24 hours prior to this meeting excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice of the date, time, and place, and agenda of this meeting was posted in prominent public view at the location of the meeting. Witnessed my hand this fourth day of February 2019.
Consent agenda. All the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved by one board vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of these items. The consent agenda consists of the discussion, consideration, and approval of the following items. 3.1 addition of items of new business to the agenda.
There are them.
3.2 minutes of a January 8, 2019, regular board meeting. 3.3 approval of the finance report. 3.4 approval of the activity fund report. 3.5 approval of the activity fundraisers. And 3.6 approval of the child nutrition report.
Okay, if we look at 3.2, the minutes of the January 8 regular board meeting, I did not see any errors with that. On our financial report, we have our January investments and all those are up to date and current. I have included a separate attachment, excuse me, that has the expenditures year-to-date from January 19 to January 18. And I need to work on making that a little bit bigger for y'all, but just to give you a couple of items where you'll see some differences year-to-date from last year to this year. Number 336. That is for most of our special education. Vocal Vision is a psychologist that we use through video. And then we have our PT and OT services. And then there'll be some shared medical center purchase orders that you will approve throughout the year, and they will be pulled from that object code. So there's been an increase in that area. If you look at 342. I'm gonna download it to make it a little bit easier for me to keep reading on here. If you look at 342, this is the payment for the E-Rate services, data processing services. That is with Kellogg &amp; Sovereign. Kellogg &amp; Sovereign is the company that we contract with, and they help us gather all of our E-Rate services and make sure that we get the proper funding and bidding for all of those services that we need. 360, those are professional development. That is object code professional employment training. And you can see that it has increased there $9,850. That has to do with our professional development. We provided teachers, Dr. Laura Riffle, Google training through Elaine Hutchison. So that's where that increase comes from. 530 postage. With our PBIS, we've been sending more cards home with some positive comments to parents. So there's been an increase there. And then also Ustream services under that 530. That is for all of our live streaming of basketball and football games. And that's where that goes to out of that object code. 656, we purchased a book repair machine out of that, and it comes out of that object code. That is titled machinery. So anytime we have any type of library material or book repair machine, it comes out of that. 810 is just reclassifying workers' compensation. So you see a decrease in 810 object code because when we encumber all that money at the beginning of the year, it goes into that 810. And then as we classify and separate out all those employees into the correct project and then object, it reclassifies their workers' compensation. If you look at 3.4, activity fund. Nothing new, no major substantial fundraisers were turned in this month. Mrs. Durkey continues to update those as she receives them. Hopefully next month, we'll begin to see a few more of those that will be turned in and completed. Want to commend the staff. Ava High School has turned in budget proposals for all of their clubs and activities. So we're reviewing those and looking at some ways that we can help some of those organizations and reduce the amount of fundraisers. 3.5, we have two fundraisers that we need to approve tonight that actually happened or occurred before we were able to get more approval. The first one is Ava High School baseball team. There was a mix-up with the calendar with university for our speech contest. So Nick had to last minute move that speech contest to Ava High School. And they needed concession and opportunity for students to get pizza or whatever they may need. So the baseball team picked that up and did that on the Saturday of that speech contest. If you look at the second one, that is from a meal that was before Christmas break for junior prom, junior senior prom. And I want to commend our, all of our organizations and sponsors. You know, we made it a goal to get all these fundraiser requests turned in this year. And we did a really good job. We'll continue to emphasize getting those in in a timely fashion in July. But sometimes things happen, and we're just unable to do that. 3.6, child nutrition fund. You can see year-to-date, we've got some, we've served just a few more lunches and breakfast year-to-date. I might also add that we had an audit report with the State Department over the last couple of months. And there are some things that we'll need to improve in our food production and serving. To give you an example, we served a fourth of a cup of green beans, and we need to sort of serve three-fourths of a cup. So there's some things like that that we realize that we do a good job in our cafeteria and our food service. And sometimes those things just happen. I can assure you that Verlita has already taken corrective action with all of these things. And we just continue to work and make sure our documentation and our records are up to date. Do we have any questions on the consent agenda items?
I move that we approve the consent agenda item those referenced in 3.2, 3.3, 3.4, 3.5, and 3.6.
One second.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Aye.
Parker.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Four, vote to approve purchase order incumbences for the following funds for fiscal year 19. 4.1, general fund, number 11, as referenced. 4.2, building fund, number 22, as referenced. And 4.3, child nutrition fund, number 22, as referenced. And 4.4, gift fund, number 81, as referenced.
Okay, we start with 4.1, general fund. Go over a couple of bigger expenditures that you'll see on there. Purchase order number 554 for time clock plus 7,425. That is an increase in that because when we first purchased that program to do all electronic leaves and clocking in and clocking out, we didn't pay for all employees. So they audited our use of that, and that's the result of the increase. If we look at purchase order number 555, that was a fee that, from Ed Sutter, for some negotiations we had with an oil company to be able to build a pad on some land that the school owned. 556, repairs on the new gym and old gym roof of the high school. 561, Hartland seating on the south end, or on the south side of the gymnasium. A lot of times those bleachers will, we're not able to retract those and then pull those back out. And part of the reason why that is, why that happens is when we bring those bleachers out and we don't bring them out all the way, and then people go and sit on them, it makes it where you're unable to move those in and out. So we've talked about the importance of bringing those all the way out or making sure those are all the way in so that we don't have to keep repairing those. But that's what that was, was to bring them up here to repair the bleachers in the new gym. 569 is Damon Brown choreography. That is work with all of our vocal music students at the Ava High School and Ava Middle School and with those show buyers. 572, 1,840, University of Oregon Swiss software. That is with Dr. Laura Riffle. That is our behavior doctor of professional development is to compile all of our referrals and office visits with students. And that's gonna allow her to look at that, meet with our administration and our teachers, and look at some strategies as to the time of day this occurs, what's happening in the classroom, and it'll help us kind of analyze that data to help those students. 573 and 574, those are some purchase orders that have to do with our Ava High School graduation supplies, diplomas, mini diplomas, covers. And then 574 is the gold pins that we give our academic banquet students, 1,700. If you look at building fund, number 21, those purchase orders are some, not real lengthy, but if you look at that first one, that has to do with Luckenbill and Top Choice Mechanical, or the first two major ones there. And that was from our hot water tank that we had the problem with, Top Choice. We mentioned that earlier in the year. They had to come in and remove some asbestos and weld the tank, and we have all that working now. Purchase number 49, right above the ramp that goes down into the new gym, there was a leak in there right after Christmas. And so Luckenbill's had to come up and once again do some repair on a pipe that ran across that old ramp leading into the new gym to get that fixed. Purchase order number 56, when we had all our rain earlier in the fall, what tends to happen at the high school offices, that will run into the, underneath the wall into the south side of those offices where the secretaries have their desk and file cabinets. So we have Rain Man Systems gonna come out and look at doing a French drain, do some soil erosion, and do some, run some guttering to move that water away so we don't have those same issues. 4.3, the child nutrition fund. Number 32, Hartland system. That is dishwasher products and washing machine. It's a dispenser that basically measures the amount of dishwasher products that go into the cleaning. Number 33, Ava Market, 2,500. That is primarily fruits that are purchased for our child nutrition program from Ava's Market. Number 36, 3,126, that is some repair that we had to do on the high school refrigerator. This month, we do have a gift fund, purchase order that needs approved. This was a student that transferred from Southwestern to Northwestern this semester and had this scholarship at Southwestern. So we moved this purchase order so that he can receive this at Northwestern for $500. And that's part of that shared trust scholarship. Are there any questions on any of the purchase order incumbences?
I'd make motion that we approve 4.1, 4.2, 4.3, and 4.4 as presented. One second.
McDermott.
Aye.
Parker.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Number five, superintendent's report, 5.1, resignations, retirements, reassignments.
Okay, we have two resignations that the board, I would recommend the board accept tonight, Brittany Reynolds and Cynthia Leiter. Brittany Reynolds will be resigning due to health reasons, and Mrs. Leiter will be leaving us at the end of the year. She is our ELL teacher to move closer to family in Oklahoma City. Appreciate both these employees. They've done good work for Ava Public Schools. I wanted to pass this around to everybody. These are our strategic planning goals and objectives. And I want to thank the community for their input and their time as we've worked on this. And I hope I made enough copies. And I, yes.
We got it, we're good. We're good.
Okay. So I wanted to just kind of go over this with you real quick. It has been a great process for our community to be able to work through what we want to see from our students. And if you look at this handout that's been made, and we're gonna, we're gonna get this to the newspaper and get this on our website and be able to celebrate this with our community. But these are just, 90% of the strategic planning process is completed. And the next step is March 14th, we will come in and with all of these goals and objectives, we're gonna start laying out a timeline for completion. And so this is kind of some things that the community has said through the surveys, through the forums, and then through the discussion with the leadership teams that they would like to see done with their schools. So I'll just read the four goals, and then we'll get those up and encourage people to get on our website and look at these objectives that have been set forth by these leadership teams. So first goal, curriculum instruction. Second goal is culture and community. The third goal is personnel. And then the fourth goal is resources. And underneath each one of those goals are some objectives that we would like to accomplish. And then to accomplish those are the initiatives. So it has been a great process. And once again, I want to thank our community and thank the board for allowing us to go through that. I might tell you legislatively, it is going to be a busy legislative session. Over 2,000 bills have been filed this legislative year, and it's gonna be a lot for them to digest and work their way through. So we need to be very mindful and stay up to date with all those. And we can bring you back a more comprehensive update in March as to where we'll be. But it's important that we stay engaged with our legislators and make sure that they know where we are and on top of all those issues. Any questions with strategic planning or legislatively?
Principals reports.
Okay. I brought some guests with me today. I have Ms. Eckhart, fifth grade teacher, and then two of her fifth grade students, Aubrey Towns and Taylor Klein. And we're gonna do a little presentation for you. I'm going to start just by talking about climate and culture and how we're preparing for the state assessments. You've heard this from all the elementaries and the middle school typing about positive reinforcement. I'm just going to tell you a little bit about what we're doing at Lincoln. Up here, I put a picture of our golden podium, and you feel free to ask the girls questions about this too. But we already had in place at Lincoln common area expectations and common vocabulary, a voice level. And we use the acronym PRIDE, which is personal best, respect. Go back. Personal best, respect, I am trustworthy, demonstrate responsibility, engage in active listening. We also have a store, the Bug Boutique, that students can shop online, and then they, it gets delivered to them or they can go to the store to pick it up. But we found that that's an incentive we're using mostly inside our homeroom classes. We're not doing a lot in the hallways. And Dr. Riffle inspired us to do something else, which is what we call our Level Two incentives. And those are our gotchas. So when a student goes above and beyond with their behavior, they receive a gotcha that has a special note on it from the teacher, any teacher in the building, I might add. And when they receive one of those, they get to put their name in the golden podium, which is in the picture. We mail the postcard home, and they get 15 pride points, which is what they spend in the Bug Boutique. And then they, there's a chance that they could receive a double gotcha, which has a smiley face on the back. And what happens if you get one that has a smiley face on the back? Do you know?
You get to call your parents about what you did good.
You get to call your parents and tell them what you did that was so great. We also have a random raffle. So on Fridays, we take all of those names, we put them in a raffle, and we draw out a name. We've done a few things so far. We did lunch with me. We had some students last week take a ride in the SRO's police car. We went down to the police station, and they got an individual tour. They saw the old jail, which they thought was really cool, very well. They wanted to go inside, but they didn't. But that was really fun, they loved that. On Thursday, we're gonna have the firefighters. They're gonna give a ride in a fire truck, go down to the fire station. It's great to have them in the building. I love having individual lunches. But I also think it's great to include the community. And the firefighters and police officers are so great to work us into their schedule. But that's a little bit about our climate. And I put up there, go to positive climate, it's a better learning experience, which means better test scores. And I think it all just cycles around, and it all relates. So if you'd go to the next slide. Here are just a few pictures. There's the students with Officer Flapp. Those are some of the students that ate lunch with me. That's what our pride card looks like. And then the teachers, when we all wear our matching Lincoln shirt, it means a double gotcha, so you have double the chances at receiving the raffle. But so well, we're on week four, and it's gone pretty well, I think. But we are apt to change if we need to. We will adjust as we feel we need to. Next slide, please. I'm going to just chat a little bit about improvement on state assessments. Fourth and fifth grade are moving to online. Like, we're taking state assessments on the computer, which is really a big deal because in fourth grade, it's the first year that they're one-to-one with computers, so they have access to one all the time. I'm gonna show you just, I know, I don't want to take up all your time with this, but I want to show you what they're doing. This is a practice test, so this is what fourth grader or fifth grader will look at when they go online and take the state assessment. It looks really simple, but there are a lot of tools that they can use here. You can't see it very well, but over here, if you click this, it takes away choices so you can like eliminate choices. Down here, they have like a highlighter tool, so they can go in and highlight things. They can change the color of the screen. They can draw, they can take notes. There's also an option to have it speak to you or read a sentence to you. There's this tool that they can slide up so they can focus on what they're reading, which is really great, and it's nice that the state provides that. The only negative is that we really need to prepare our students on how to use these tools because there's a chance that someone could get on a test and just decide they don't know what to do, and just maybe they start to want a picture. You know, you never know. That could happen. So our teachers are really trying to include computer skills and how to use these tools, not just on the practice test provided by the state, but they use Google Classroom a lot, which is some trainings that we have received. And the girls are gonna talk to you about some computer programs that they use in their classroom. But I just wanted to show you that because it's such a big change from, you know, filling in a bubble on a piece of paper. So just take that into consideration when we go into testing. There's a lot of changes that our students are dealing with, just moving from paper pencil to a computer-based test. On content, Ms. Eckhart is gonna talk a little bit about that, but our fourth grade takes a math test and an ELA test, and the fifth grade takes math, ELA, and science. We take the math test three times a year. You've heard us talk about that before, but we use that math test to help us decide where our students are weak and what areas we need to work on. You know, sometimes we don't get the state assessment from the previous year until late fall of the next year. So the math test is something that's wonderful because it follows our students from the moment, the first time they take it, all the way up until fourth or fifth grade. And from that information, we create growth groups. Ms. Eckhart will talk about that. But it's just differentiated instruction that our students use every day. So I'm gonna let Ms. Eckhart take over and talk to you a little bit. All right, so what we do once they've taken their math test is we kind of pull up this screen, and this is part of the student's progress report. And I can click in there to each student's areas. So this student has their three main areas of reading over there, and I can see which area they're the weakest in. And as a teacher, of course, you kind of can pinpoint where a kid is, but you may not be able to find that exact skill. So what this test does, it really helps us pinpoint exact areas where they need, not just me continuously guessing and hope I'm getting it right. It really pinpoints where they're at. So this student's lowest area was reading and comprehending texts, which their score was great, but every student has something to work on. So if we look over to the side, it tells us that that student needs to work on identifying different kinds of genre in informational and in literary stories. So that's what that student would be put in a growth group with, would be working on genre. And it could be a student that scores high on genre or low on genre, doesn't really matter. I think it's really great for kids of different abilities to work together on the same subject area because they can kind of pull each other up and challenge each other. So that's where we kind of pull our, what skill they need to work on.
Oh yeah, you're good.
Sorry, Mr. Keely. You're good at this. And then I take my class and I divide them up. These are actually our January growth group choices for my kids right now. So we just finished this math one up here, we're finishing it this week, and then we're gonna move on to reading, which is down below. So I tried it, I mean, it doesn't, as you can see, there's one group of one child. So usually, she's the one that I try to go work with, so she's not by herself during growth group. And then I try to incorporate her into another group of maybe a secondary skill that she needs to be working on, because I would hate for them to be by themselves. But, and that's where our groups go during our station time, which is four times a week for about 30 minutes a day.
What would be the reason they would be there by themselves?
That was just the only, she was the only person that had that skill that she needed to work on. Yeah. And then within each group, I have them create kind of a checklist. This worked really well with our, my class last year, and so we would create a checklist of everything we were going to do from beginning to end in our station group before we were, we had conquered our skill and we were ready to move on to the next one. So they did do a lot of similar things, and the girls are going to describe some of those things that they used during station time. Are you ready, girls? All right.
So vocabulary is like an educational part of, it's like learning, and then they would make like a song about whatever, like genre is fiction. So they would like name. And then they have point of view, they have matter, so they have lots of subjects that you can work on.
And then they have at the side there, they have a quiz, a reading respond, the vocab game, some cards, some like vocab cards. Yeah, flashcards. And their club.
So you guys can get on and play with all those things and work on your skill.
And then Study Island is where we mostly take tests for like, for some other things. And then they also have lessons for, because we use them for our January stations, and mine was time. So I went, so you can use the lesson, and there's a practice, and then there's game mode. So you can do a, you can do a question, and then you can play a game for like, maybe a minute. Yep. And then there's a match in math for...
It's seven questions are the pre-quiz, and then, I think seven questions are the moment two, and then there's graded learning, and then practice, and then post-quiz, and then finish.
So we use all these things to see if we've mastered our skill, right?
Yeah.
Do you guys want to show them what you have right there?
And mine was actually elapsed time also, so I brought a game for elapsed time. And we have like games, or we have like these cards that we use. So, and then for my reading, it's, so this is genres. This one, and then you can match up what the symbol goes to. Right down, up there.
So each student is... Well, we try to do them as whole groups so they're working together. And then a lot of this stuff right here is individual to see if they're getting skill.
Got it.
Yeah.
And then mine's just questions. So like, find the elapsed time in hours, minutes. So like, whenever you get an elapsed time.
You don't have to all say.
You don't have to say. You may not even know the answer.
Good job, girls. Is there anything you want to add? Guys have any questions for any of us?
Targeting portion of it's gotta be right if it's got Taylor needing help with time management. You must have put it right on the right...
That's no, don't they?
Thank you, girls.
Thank you.
Way to be a girl, thank you.
Way to pay your heart to the incentive behavior. You like what they're doing?
Do you? Yeah.
Do they have good stuff? Work on work?
Yeah, Bug Boutique's amazing.
Say that again.
The Bug Boutique.
Okay. Yeah, they say the Bug Boutique is amazing.
Does that voice stuff in there too?
Uh, there's like the waters.
Okay. It's not necessarily just things.
It's not like, yeah.
Kind of intangibles. Homework passes and wear your hat to school for the day or pajamas.
Rialto. One of the most popular one though is get a rialto drink when the teachers do. That's really cool. The teachers order drinks, you get one too. That's been pretty popular.
Yeah. There's also candy bars that can be...
Well, that's always a good one.
Yeah.
You girls did a great job.
They did.
Thank you, girls. Good job.
Thank you, Mrs. Eckhart.
You guys, you don't have to say it. We'd like to go.
You can get back to Mrs. Eckhart. Is this going here?
No.
It was, oh, that was the agenda.
Yeah.
Don't get mad at them.
She doesn't want that.
Thank you, Mrs. Eckhart.
Thanks, girl. Thank you, guys.
Great job, ladies.
Good job. Thank you.
Go figure back, Kathy.
Okay, Item 7, Items of Current Business. 7.1 Discussion with Possible More Action. Vote to approve an out-of-state travel for the Electric Gold Show Choir to travel to Branson, Missouri. Dates of the trip will be from March 20th to March 24th, 2019.
And I would recommend that the board approve this. Electric Gold has taken trips over spring break or in and around that date for many years now. I think the last couple of years, I may have been in Colorado. And this bill is put together, an agenda, and been reviewed by Mr. Potter to go to Branson this year. So I would recommend we agree with this trip for our Electric Gold students.
Motion.
A second.
Need a motion.
I'll motion to approve 7.1.
And a second. Thank you.
Kane?
Yes.